Viewpoint discrimination can be a serious problem among government officials. At this March 12th, 2024 city council meeting, Mayor Melissa Youssef can be heard asking the public to give a round of applause for a hockey team of kids from Durango who recently won a state championship game. The team is not funded by the city of Durango. The police chief invites them into the room and the players and coaches talk to city council about their accomplishments. One thing to ask yourself when watching this is why the city of Durango felt compelled to edit out the sounds of clapping for the hockey team from the live stream YouTube video of this meeting?
Meeting summit, 4-2 in Denver on March 5th. First of all, huge round of applause. This is Durango High School's first state championship in any sport since 2020. The accomplishment came just two years after Durango moved from a club team, after Durango Hockey moved from a club team to a sanctioned varsity team under Chassa. What is amazing about this team is that it is pretty much a 50-50 split from players from Telluride and players from Durango.
And I also want to say thank you to my counselors and the community for letting me take off last Tuesday to watch them win the state championship. I know there was a lot going on and we had to delay some things and I wouldn't have missed it for the world and I'd miss every city council meeting to watch them play in a state championship game, for sure. So congratulations, boys. I'm so proud of you. You work so hard.
Later in the meeting, a member of the Durango Palestine Solidarity Coalition gives comments about an agenda item that would prohibit legislation concerning matters of international political controversy. The people in the meeting immediately clapped for what this person said after they're finished talking. Except this time, Mayor Melissa Youssef asks the audience to refrain from clapping until the end. Is this viewpoint discrimination?
Given that this resolution would have absolutely no impact on their efforts at all, including having a discussion of this resolution is to me just a tactic to delegitimize our efforts here over the past few meetings. Frankly, it's insulting. Not only would this resolution not curtail their actions, but it would be handing them a victory. I will say this group, say not loud. And you can look them up if you want. Their stated goal is to limit public participation at city council meetings. So I urge you to think about that when you're thinking about this resolution. I strongly urge you to reconsider this resolution. I'm worried about what this means for our community. And by the way, we are nearing 700 signatures on our ceasefire resolution petition. 300, thank you. I am going to ask that you hold your applause until we're all done. If you will, so we can get you this mark back to the ladies.
So we can clap for hockey, but not against genocide. Is that right? Go hockey! Hockey matters! Hockey matters!
Well, they basically told us that the hockey team was playing with us and that they wanted to recognize them and so that when they showed up, they would call, have us leave the chamber, have them come in, and so essentially traded out. But the issue is that like, you know, after every comment, we were silent. We followed the rules in the chamber. And then we made one amount of noise and she calls for us. Every single time. But other people clap for hockey, we can clap. That's a laugh.
A lot of cheers for hockey.
We cheer for hockey. In the last meeting, I don't know if you got the recording of that, she said when the person was talking about delivering babies, the 911 dispatcher was like, amazing job. That's to be celebrated, right? Her comment was, "That is so beautiful. That's so great." Real lives, real lives that matter. And they paused public comment on active genocide to congratulate a hockey team. So apparently, we can show up and be present and clap and cheer for hockey, but not for like, how many thousand lives? Over 30,000 lives. We can't make any noise for that.
Who was clapping when the hockey team?
Well, you're allowed to clap for hockey, right? That's a laugh, but it's a laugh.
Right, because they were cheerleading for the hockey team.
You get pictures.
It's also not a city function, the demon hockey team. It's a during a school disreality function, isn't it?
I mean, like, that's great. Cool. Celebrate the kids, you know, good job, community involvement. Want to celebrate their, that's great. But the censorship of who can and cannot go over their time is horrific. There's so many discrepancies that are so blatant.
The children now that don't have legs to play hockey with or aren't. And all of us like, we're just, they just don't, they don't see us, they don't hear us, you know? They don't hear anything that you said the entire time because every time we played, they're very there, they're very vocal, they're famous. Nothing.
They also, I noticed the city council walked out en masse at the end of the comments about the resolution at the last meeting. As soon as everybody made their comments about the resolution, they all took a recess. They all got up and walked out.
So what she said at the beginning of comments was, "Please hold your applause till the end." We did that. And the minute that we applauded, she was like, recess, recess, and called for recess, which we actually did what she told us to do. Hold your applause till the end.
Right.
Yeah.
Understand, you know, what people have said. Obviously, local matters are very important. That's, that's in the rank. But just being heard is important. And so I guess, I guess I would wish you in favor of continuing that dialogue. That's all our voices.
Thank you.
And next is Joshua Craig, followed by Jamie Bechtel.
Hello. My name is Joshua Craig and I'm a resident of Durango, Colorado. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Coalition in regards to item 11.2 and why I disagree. I stand here today because I've been a resident of Durango for seven years now and I would consider myself lucky if I were fortunate enough to reside here for the next seven years and beyond. Since moving here, I've started a small landscaping company and I earn a living quite literally pouring my blood, sweat, tears into this soil, into this land we call Durango. I cherish this opportunity and I feel privileged to be able to work with the residents of this community. And conversely, I am happy to spend my dollar locally. I want to continue spending my hard-earned money at local businesses because I can see that Durango cares about its residents and cares about improving their quality of life. Though a portion of my taxes does yet responsibly return to the community I call home, the unfortunate and dare I say inconvenient truth is a portion of the money I spend and work very hard to earn is taken by the federal government and spent internationally. To put simply, money I spend and earn right here in this town is being used to help fund the genocide in Gaza. This is not a political issue. This is not a religious issue. This is a human issue, a human audacity. And whether we like it or not, our quaint community is currently involved. I will finish by asking the council, if you do not believe it is our duty to speak up on planet life affairs, then what planet do you operate on? Thank you.
And Mayor, the last public comment for 11.2 is Jamie Bechtel.
Hello. I met this young man in the hallway and asked him if he'd just stand with me. My name is Jamie Bechtel and I am not a resident of Durango. I was previously, but I've taught here for many years, for multiple years. And I'm here to speak against number 11. Over the years, I have taught in many of Durango's schools and I've taught many of Durango's children and young people at River Miss preschool, Juniper School, Escalante Middle School, and Fort Lewis College. And when I view the images of the suffering that is being experienced by the children of Gaza, I can't help but conflate the agony on their faces with the faces of my own students. Because as a teacher, the thought of losing even one of my students is really impossible to bear. With your proposed legislation, you posit that the tragedy in Gaza is not relevant to city discourse. And yet, there are 14 public schools in the Durango 9R district serving 5,794 children. Some of them perhaps are your own children that might go to public school. And I just want you to imagine, and it's not a pretty thing to imagine, but I would like you to imagine just for a moment all of Durango's children being gone. Just all of them gone. And then if you could double that number in your imagination, and I know it's really hard to do, that doesn't even hit the number of the children that have lost their lives in this conflict in less than a semester of school time. And this is a community of over 400 public school educators plus the professors at Fort Lewis College and Public Community College, people who have chosen to dedicate their lives to children and young people. And we teach children about political issues. We teach our students about people around the world. We try to instill in them a sense of individual conviction to care about things in the world beyond where they live. So knowing that, I ask, how can you propose a resolution that would prohibit the consideration of, as you say, matters of international political controversy, ideological or religious beliefs, or matters of individual conviction? Why would you propose legislation that would deny our freedom as educators to speak out on the moral injury of this situation? Thank you.
Was that the last one? Okay, sorry. May we please then have a reading of the consent agenda? Oh, thank you. Do we have anyone who wanted to comment virtually? I'm sorry.
No one had signed up for public comment on agenda items, only virtually.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us do that. All right, we can have a reading of the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor. For item 8, the consent agenda, there are no items under 8.1, approval of meeting minutes. There are no items under 8.2, final reading of ordinances. Under item 8.3, under adoption of resolutions by consent, item 8.3.1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement for the pass-through of property tax backfill funding to the Durango Fire Protection District. There are no items under 8.4, approval of other administrative items. No items under 8.5, land use and development action items. And no items under 8.6, request for public hearing.
Thank you, Ben. Is there any council that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved?
Yes, sir.
We will roll call, please, Sam.
Councilor Woodruff? Yes. Mayor Probst and Mueller?
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
All right, guys, I'm going to show you what they've done in the water fountain here. They say it's out of order. But I think they did that to just make the meeting more uncomfortable for people that are attending. As you can see, the water fountain works. So this water fountain is obviously operational, but they put this sign on it to make it look like it's not operational. Just to make it, make the meeting a little more uncomfortable for people.
All right, may we have a reading of 11.2, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 11.2 is a resolution establishing the policy of the city of Durango City Council prohibiting the consideration of legislation concerning matters of international political controversy, ideological or religious beliefs, or individual conviction, matters directly impacting the governance of the city of Durango, accepted. And that's submitted by the city attorney's office.
Thank you, Ben. Mr. Morgan, would you like to introduce?
I will do my best. It's resolution number 2024-15, if I understand correctly. Resolution 2024-15. Before I start, I just want to say that I share the emotion and conviction that former Mayor Sweden Marbury gives when it comes to freedom of expression. You know, you don't go to law school to try to repress rights. You go to law school to try to protect them. And having said that, I can comment that the proposed policy found in tonight's agenda, if passed, is a tool to align public comment at regular special meetings with previously adopted policies and ordinances. Current city ordinance, section 2-200 prohibits counselors from considering legislation regarding political party or regional or ideological partisanship. Current policy prohibits counselors from making proclamations, stating size of matters of political, ideological, religious beliefs, or individual conviction. It's significant that the language in there says, "Consider legislation." Because the only place you can consider legislation is at a regular meeting like tonight or at a special meeting that the mayor and three counselors have taken to call. It has nothing to do with the freedom of expression and many other forms that are available to the residents of Durango. It's just regarding your meetings. Regarding public comments and free speech at our meetings, the first thing I'd like to make very, very clear is that this is a decision of the elected officials of the city of Durango. These are your meetings and it's your decision how you conduct them. You already have policies in place that restrict time, place, and manner. You made a choice to adopt the rules on how we conduct these meetings. You made a choice to limit the time counselors can speak and you made a choice to limit the time that the public can speak. So you already have restrictions on free speech at your regular meetings. A lot of people understand those restrictions, but I'm going to give you restrictions that come to whether the type of forum that you're going to conduct, people are less familiar. Supreme Court of the United States regulates traditional public forums, designated public forums, and limits of public forums. Legally and constitutionally, you're only required to have public comment on matters that you will be voting on. You have chosen to have public comment on other non-agenda items. The question before you tonight is whether you're going to become a designated public forum or maintain your status as a limited public forum. Since you hired me, we've had history. We adhere to the rules of order and follow specific procedures to advance the business of the city. These rules and procedures were established to allow us to react appropriately to the type incidents that happened during the hate bombing and antisemitism a few minutes back. You'll recall that during those meetings, I very loudly said, "This is a limited public forum and you are constitutionally allowed to restrict this type of speech." In contrast, and then recently, Fort Collins has designated himself a public forum. They are not a limited public forum. Their agenda very clearly says that any matter can be spoken about by any individual who signs up to speak at their meetings. There are other places in Colorado where the charter says that you are required, as a designated part of your agenda, creating a designated public forum where you cannot restrict things to city business. If you read these articles about Fort Collins, they were unable to conduct business at that meeting because of their status as a designated public forum. And I understand, for researching about it, they may go to completely virtual public meetings to avoid the type of issues that they had at stake. I personally would advise Fort Collins to do that, but I don't work for Fort Collins. I work for you guys. Absent a charter change, I want to stress again, this is your meeting. It is your business meeting. And you have the absolute right to decide what type of forum you want to be. And the legislation that's out there today is constitutionally appropriate. It retains your designation as a limited public forum. It is a choice that you have to make between being a limited public forum where you can restrict speech in a constitutional way like you already do for time, place, and manner. You're just restricting it to city business. It has no effect on the city as a whole. A lot of people have made comments that the city is trying to limit or silence us. That's a very, very overreaching, overbroad approach, but it's very effective when you're demonstrating to try to prove a point. That is not what is happening here. You guys are making a simple decision between being a designated public forum and what happens if problems can happen in a designated public forum like happened in Fort Collins, or retaining your status as a limited public forum. Constitutional case for names, listening to Rosenberg versus the University of Virginia, which very clearly established by the Supreme Court, that limited public forums are constitutional, they are appropriate, and they are within your authority to establish with things like this resolution.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion from council? I'll make a motion to approve a resolution establishing a policy of the Durango City Council prohibiting the consideration of legislation concerning matters of international political controversy, ideological or religious beliefs, or individual conviction, matters directly impacting the governance of the city of Durango, accepted. F E H P G. Resolution number 2024-15.
I second Gilman.
Thank you, Councilor Addison. Council discussion. Who would like to start? Okay, I didn't look at your words, so I'll go. Okay, my thoughts on the resolution before us. I educate myself and I study issues of city budgeting, finance, affordable housing, transit, parks, and recreation. Durango's strength lies in addressing the needs and concerns of our local community, not leaning into complex international matters, matters that I will be completely honest with you. Do not, I do not have the education or background to make policy on. While we can strive to be global citizens, pronouncements on delicate affairs of this nature risk overstepping our bounds and potentially complicating existing diplomatic efforts. And then the question lies, where do we draw the line? Do we propose resolutions about funding Ukraine, laws that Alabama just passed about First Amendment border policy? The list could go on and on and public comment could go on and on for hours. This is not what we are, this is not what I am educated on. And we may disagree about this and you may say that I should educate myself on these items and that's okay. But I can tell you as a mom of two teenage boys, owner of two businesses in the city of Durango, a city counselor that makes roughly $10,000 a year to sit here and educate myself on city issues. It is not in my bandwidth to have the education or background for every national or international issue. It is not in my ability or scope. I ran for council because I love our community. I ran for council for the community I fell in love with 22 years ago. I ran because I love raising my kids here. I love owning businesses here. I love the spirit and character of our community. Someone here said that we are trying to silence you and that is in fact not the case. We have listened. We have taken notes. And we hear you. In those first meetings, no counselor wanted to champion the resolution you were wanting us to do. It's okay to disagree. It's okay for us to disagree on what you think we should advocate for as city counselors, what we should weigh in on. It's okay for us to disagree on what you think I should be educated on even. We are able to disagree. That's what makes our community so amazing. It's why I moved here. It's why I love raising my kids here. And just because we don't agree doesn't mean we need to be disagreeable, rude, or disrespectful. It doesn't mean that we have to hate each other. When we start discussing issues that are deeply rooted in religious and cultural complexities, this is outside of why I was elected to city council. I ran on issues of affordable housing, of keeping the spirit and character alive here. The issue, these issues that we're talking about in this resolution often defy simple solutions. I believe our true strength lies in demonstrating the values we hold dear as a community. Durango has a long history of advocating for peace, understanding, and respect of all individuals, regardless of their backgrounds or beliefs. We can continue to champion these values by supporting organizations working directly in the region to provide humanitarian aid and foster dialogue, promoting intercultural understanding and education within our own community, standing in solidarity with those suffering from conflict regardless of their nationality or religion. There are important roles we all play in our community, activists, city counselors, city staff. Knowing how and where we best serve our community is crucial to getting important work accomplished and having meetings run effectively. I love engaged citizens. We have had council chambers filled numerous times. Sometimes we voted with the room, sometimes we did it, but we listened. And we voted the way we felt was best for the city. And that is our role as counselors. That is why we were elected. Those are just a few of my thoughts. As we now get the first waters and it tends to get down. Thank you. Other counselors?
Policy making is in the heart of our roles as city counselors. We decide a policy as a body and our critical staff in cities go with the operational aspect of those policy decisions that make them reality. Some resolutions and ordinance are slimmed down with some invasive to everybody. Sometimes they revise and impact everyone who's within our community. Even rarely sometimes it's asked for us to take a stance in supporting or not supporting matters of national and global importance. Taking the time to pass this last ever resolution and taking a stance on an issue while almost always notable often has effects that are not those that those need to hear them the most. We are already divided on local issues like waitless hours at late night hours, how to best spend waters tax revenues, and what our proposed annexation and subsequent development should look like. An even larger divide can be seen on a resolution taking, supporting, or not supporting a ceasefire in Gaza. Council taking a stance on such a complicated issue only deepens those local divides that cannot be solved by a two-page document. Frankly, we're overwhelmed by local problems that we could better apply our intellectual bandwidth towards. That being said, substantive impact comes to our, substantive impact in our community happens on a local level. Sound local policy direction happens through collaborative public input with our constituents, listening to civic leaders, our Durango residents, and civic matter experts, and considering legislation from the objective mind. I believe considering most, if not all, ordinances or resolutions are a part of why we're here and why we are elected in our roles as city councils. By voting yes in this resolution, I think it only disconnects us from our community and takes away from the important work that we do on a daily basis. Considering legislation, even legislation that is being proposed by constituents today and at previous meetings is the backbone of why we're here. And I believe we should be restricting legislative proposals that our community members might employ. Our job is to really err in reason. I believe that's why we wanted to be on council in the first place. Roll our sleeves and get the work done, even once harder. Unfortunately, the cost of distancing ourselves from our community far outweighs any type of benefit. We all rely on platforms to lend to our community and weigh out their voice and create meaningful policies around what is important to us and what reflects our values. I believe that this resolution being proposed currently can be taken entirely out of context by someone who uses silence of public participation on the grounds of ideal political beliefs. The unintended consequence of this resolution leaving concern that members of the public could be left out because of one person's interpretation of what this resolution brings forward. Often, local government is the first connection that people have with their government at large. If constituents feel like they are not being heard by their state or federal representatives, then this is the only mechanism they have left to give their concern a voice. Additionally, while the First Amendment may prohibit Durango City Council from making any law respecting the establishment of religion, a latter part of the First Amendment states, and I quote, "Or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peacefully to assemble and petition the government for redress of grievances," end quote. It is that last phrase, "right of the people peacefully to assemble and petition the government for redress of grievances," that compels me to believe that this resolution would inflict more harm than do-gooding in hailing against this council and people. Sometimes we are the last place constituents can go and feel like they are seen and heard by their government. These folks have the right to peacefully assemble and redress the grievances so long as that assembly and redress do not devolve into hate speech or disrupt the ability of this body to conduct business regarding city operations. This mechanism gives them a peaceful option to voice their concerns. That peaceful isolated option is taken away from them. It gives them a few other options to peacefully assemble and petition the government. While this resolution may negatively inhibit public participation and speech, however, this takes away a lever for the public to pull and feel like their voices are heard. Ultimately, we as a council reserve the right to bring up a possible resolution under new business. We have not exerted that right with the Coalition. We have not exerted that right with the coalition, with the coalition proposals of these past three weeks. I feel that we do not need a resolution preventing what we are already doing. After the board's decommissioned dissolution, this matter gives the optics that we are given trying to limit public participation in the city process. While we have taken various tries of capturing public participation via other outlets, thank you for your answer, thank you, Tom. Lack of engaged Durango forums, council meeting public participation, utilization of focus groups, reaching out to local and regional nonprofits, contact city council via website, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This reinforces the belief that we are trying to limit public participation and we are actually trying to achieve the exact opposite. Thank you.
Councilor Yazi, do you want to add something?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I appreciate all the comments. You know, this resolution has brought me to, um, to think about how I can feel about city government. And moving forward, I do think this resolution would help us be more effective in what we're trying to accomplish, which is provide services for the city of Durango. We have been working as a limited public forum since I came to council. And I think this resolution is just simply codifying it in our ordinances. One of the reasons I ran for city council was to see if we could streamline our meetings, go ahead and participate in a very functional fashion. And I do think this resolution would help us do that. This resolution does not impact, um, the way the public wants to interact with us because they could still bring their resolution to city council. They would still have to get somebody to sponsor it. You would have to get two councillors to sign on, on it, a first and a second, and then you'd have to bring it forward and get a majority vote for it to become part of our regulations. So the process is still there to move forward with resolutions. I do feel good about this resolution. And that's all I did want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Yazi. Now, I'll stack my notes that, first of all, I sincerely appreciate hearing from all of you. Um, you're very passionate, uh, about the comments. And, um, I, I just want to say that, in my opinion, this is no means in effort to stop any, um, of your advocacy and support for this cause. And I hope that everyone in this room, regardless of the outcome, continues, um, with that, that say and cause. And, um, as a city, I think that we will continue to do what we can to support that, um, in the right forums. I want to say that I've served for seven years. I feel honored to have had the opportunity to pass literally hundreds of resolutions that directly impact the health and mobility of our resident, residents. Resolutions that support housing, transportation, safety, security, infrastructure, streets, the list goes on. I've been myopically focused on local issues, looking at the state and national level when it involves funding and/or legislation that has a direct impact on our community. And I have done this because I believe that that was what I was elected to do. And that may sound counter to many of you in this room, but it is not counter to the many colleagues that support my position. It is not counter to our current city ordinances that prohibit councillors from considering legislation regarding political party or regional or ideological partisanship. And it is not counter to our current city policy that prohibits council from making proclamations taking sides in matters of political, ideological, or religious beliefs. The resolution that we're considering tonight aligns public comment on non-agenda items with previously adopted ordinances and policies, allowing our meeting, allowing our meetings to remain focused on matters that directly impact the governance of the city. And while I was not on council when these ordinances and policies were enacted, I support them as it has allowed me to focus on all things Durango. I want to thank our city manager for reaching out, um, to our congressional delegation in an effort to promote opportunities for meaningful discourse on issues of international conflict, hopefully with people listening who are in a position to take action. Many of you have sat through several city council meetings now. You see the work that we address at each meeting. I hope you see the importance of maintaining a structure where we can productively complete our work while simultaneously promoting free speech and opportunities to gather, assemble, and peacefully promote them and/or protest. I would also ask the councillors who do not support this resolution tonight to talk about what it is you will do to support the individuals in this room and further support their cause if you want to keep hearing from them in this setting. What action will you take to make a difference for them? What action can you take to make a difference for them in this setting? As difficult as it is for me to stand in front of you as very rightfully passionate and determined group, I want to be honest and forthright with what I believe I was elected to do and what I am able to do within the confines of our own governing documents. And with that, I'll see if any other comments has, um, if any other councillor has additional comments to add. Okay, seeing that, maybe we have roll call, please, Ben.
Councillor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Yousaf?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
No.
And Mayor Proton Buehl?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. With that, we will move on to public comment on non-agenda items, item number thirteen. Do we have individuals who want to participate in that tonight?
Yeah, just a moment, Mayor, while I sort the list here. So there's ten individuals signed up to speak during public participation for non-agenda items. And we can start with, uh, folks, uh, present in the room that would appreciate.
Absolutely. And I'll go ahead and read, um, a brief, just a commentary before, and then I'll have you follow that up. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to write comments regarding.
Thank you, Councillor Woodruff. Free Palestine.
Free Palestine.
Please note that in order to make a comment tonight, you'll need to have signed up on our online public participation form. The QR code is available near the front door as well as a computer tablet for this purpose. The rules are similar to those that, uh, for items that do appear on the agenda. Begin your comments by saying your full name. The topic you will comment on, if you are a resident of the city of Durango, make your comments directly to council. Do not expect a response from council staff. We're limiting comments to three minutes for each individual signed in. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others in this court. Only majority vote counts, and council can extend those limits. Comments must be deranged and specific to city matters. Personal attacks, profanity, hate speech, derogatory remarks, speech relating to city matters or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of court without a chair, and remaining time will be forfeited. That's it. Thank you. We'll go ahead and start, Ben.
The first individual is Keaton Griffith, and that's going to be followed by Katya Speaker.
Good evening, um, my name is Keaton Griffith, I'm a Durango resident. I'm here to speak to the, um, effort to, uh, send contact with our federal representatives regarding our concerns of Palestine. Frankly, this effort is pretty patronizing. I mean, it feels like we haven't been listened to at all because many of us have been calling and emailing our reps every single day for over five months now about this. They do not listen. They're not gonna listen just because you pass us off to them without having our backs first. And again, that's why this feels like a way to just wave us off again, like we have our problem because you don't have our backs first. It's just gonna become a circle of no one listening to us. You, and by doing this, you're demonstrating that you have the power to take our concerns up the chain. So acting like you can't do anything because you can only address local matters just, it doesn't make any sense anymore. It never did anyway. The city has done this before too with climate change. So we heard earlier tonight with previous resolutions of collaborating with other cities, higher level representatives. Why can't you do it with this issue? Climate change and this are both global humanitarian issues. And climate change and colonial violence are both deeply intertwined. You cannot solve one without addressing the other. I can understand why you think that working within the system and putting us up to these federal representatives is the right way to solve things. I mean, we've been taught, we've all been taught this like our whole lives. But something that I've learned personally within the past few years is that no liberation in history has ever come from working within the system. People have always had to fight to push this agenda, to do it the right thing. And tonight, you just passed a resolution that makes it certain that we have, that that's our only choice here. So just listen to me and know that you failed us, you failed me, you failed the world by helping to preserve a status code that allows for genocide to be possible.
Yeah.
Can we ask you guys to please hold your comments or clapping so that you can keep me through?
We're not hockey champions after all.
The next individual is Katya Speaker. That's going to be followed by Christina Thorburn.
Okay, we're gonna take recess. I'd like to make a motion to take recess for a second. Second. Roll call, please, Ben.
Councillor Woodruff? Mayor Proton Buehl?
Yes.
Councillor Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Yousaf?
Yes, thank you.
All right, guys, we're gonna shut down the livestream and restart it. Here, Durango City Council.
So we can clap for hockey, but not against genocide, is that right? Go hockey! Hockey Fathers! Hockey Fathers!
Looks like it works to me.
We're going to resume from recess and try to continue with public participation. I'm gonna ask for everyone's cooperation, participation, in letting us get through this smoothly and successfully. Um, so let's try again, Ben.
Thank you, Mayor. The next individual is Katya Speaker. And that'll be followed by Christina Thorburn.
My name's Katya Speaker. I'm a Durango resident. And I'd just like to take a moment to share with you, um, sorry, I'm a little fuzzy right now because, um, a group of us are using, are using our energies here today when we haven't, we've been fasting from sunup to sundown for Ramadan in honor of those Palestinians. So I want to take a second to just invite, um, the folks in the lobby to come sit behind me who've been working on this for the last five months. So anyone in the lobby who wants to come in and join me and sit behind me so you're not blocking anyone's view. So I think it's, um, goes without saying that there's quite a bit of disappointment in this room of people right now. I'm sure quite a few of us probably did vote for some of you. I want to thank Councillor Woodruff for your vote. And it's true that a lot of us have been gathering every Sunday at Wembley Park to march. We have been contacting our state and federal representatives, congresspeople. We're organizing a teach-in to help educate our community about this issue. We have a book club that meets every couple of weeks. So I want to paint that picture for you because it's not just what you're seeing at the meetings here. We're doing a lot in this community. And we do see a lot of our members of this community as well as those who maybe don't organize with us, who are deciding to, um, to participate but are also very much affected by this issue. They're Jewish, they're Palestinian, they really, really care about this issue. I'd also like to say that it's really unfortunate there are other councillors across the country that are standing up for this. And it's really disappointing, so. Free Palestine.
Free Palestine.
The next speaker is Christina Thorburn, and that's going to be followed by Jody Underwood.
My comment is actually four eleven, so I'd just like to reemphasize what Katya said to you earlier. There's a lot that you don't see every two weeks that everybody here is doing and a lot of people are doing. And I would urge you to do the same. I would actually welcome you to come to the teach-in and learn something. And the last thing I'd like to say is just to thank Dave, Councillor Woodruff. It's a great thing to do. And it requires bravery, it requires looking up and sitting in your discomfort. It's uncomfortable. And I urge you to push through that discomfort because it sucks. But on the other side, it's changed, that's why we're pushing change, it's uncomfortable. It requires bravery. And I commit to doing it.
So thank you for your comments.
Next will be Jody Underwood, followed by Jamie Bactel.
I really just signed up because I didn't know about, you know, I didn't know which one I was gonna do, but I'm just very disappointed in all of you, that's all.
Free Palestine, ceasefire now.
Free Palestine, ceasefire now.
And the next speaker is Jamie Bactel, followed by Whitney Lee.
I will always cheer for a child who has triumphed over something. And so I just, I want you to know, I genuinely clapped for your son. I genuinely, genuinely clapped for those boys because they deserve it. They deserve to be, they deserve to be recognized for their accomplishment. And I just want you to know, as like, as a human being, I was late to the conversation about what's happening on the other side of the world. I was. And I was busy, I'm a teacher, I was just wrapped up in my own life, and that's completely valid. And, but then I started to pay attention and it started to change me. And I started to see children, and I couldn't unsee it. So you mentioned that you haven't dug into this topic. And I'm just, I'm speaking to you, that's why, Mayor Buehl. And anyone else that identifies with not having dipped your toe in or looked or challenged yourself to look at the photos or to understand the implications of what's happening there. or to understand the implications of what's happening there and how international law is being just ignored in the lives of children, the lives of schools. As an educator, seeing how many schools and universities have been destroyed there. It, that is what hits me, the children hit me. That's, I mean, that's, that's my pain thing, is children. And I don't know how old your kids are, if they're in high school or middle school, but I work in a middle school. And right now, as per state standards, kids are learning about the Holocaust. And they're reading books like Night by Ellie Weisell and Elephants in the Garden. And they're having these difficult conversations and they're going on the UNHCR, United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees website. And they're looking at refugees around the world and they're doing reports on that. And just to walk, this is where it's happening, like the children are engaging in these difficult conversations that are going to spark them towards individual conviction to want to do something someday. They're going to see what's happening and they're going to want, some of them, not all, some of them are going to want to do something. And so you're going to do what you're going to do, you already did it. But I just, as a human being, I want to implore you to please engage with this topic when you're busy. But please, 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 just look into this topic. Please come to our teach-in on the 25th at the library. Just come be open. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And Mayor, there are four individuals left, and Whitney Lee is sixth.
Thank you, Ben.
My name is Whitney Lee, I am a resident of Durango. I'm speaking in disappointment of the resolution that you just passed. And obviously, in support of the ceasefire resolution, that will now never happen unless we repeal someday the resolution that you just passed. I'm disappointed that you have insinuated and directly stated that this community, community members that have spoken in favor of the ceasefire resolution do not care about issues that directly impacts this community. The only reason that this movement in Durango has gained any traction is because of a program that meets in Butler Park to provide resources to vulnerable populations, predominantly the homeless population. It is work that you have made harder when you shut down Purple Cliffs and give those people no other options. You probably think that we don't care about issues of this community because you do not understand the power of collective liberation. I also want to say that I do not believe that liberation ever comes from trying to appeal to the moral sense of those who are in power, no matter at what level. It always comes through the collective gathering and power of communities. But I'm glad that we tried this road because now, when we do force the hand of our elected officials, we can say that we tried everything that we could.
And Mayor, next we have Naylin Sarr. And that'll be followed by Lee Dean.
Hello, my name is Naylin Sarr. I am not a resident, I am a college student at Fort Booth College. I would only like to speak about 11.2. I would like to highlight the fact that, as this attorney said, you know, when he was explaining the resolution, this was already a limited forum, hate speech was already restricted in this space. Now it is simply a more limited forum. And using very vague language, that I, as many of the other people in this room have already seen, feels like it could unintentionally restrict things that perhaps otherwise the council would like to speak on. I think that Councilor Woodruff was correct in saying that what ultimately this has done is made many of the people in this community feel more distant from their government, the local government, as well as the higher levels of government who already are failing to listen to us. And again, the resolution, 11.2, is different from the ceasefire resolution. I would like to highlight that you all could have continued to refuse to pass the ceasefire resolution without passing 11.2. You are already doing this, you could continue to do this. And I understand, okay? I, I, I think that it can, some of what we've said feels very likely like an attack. And I do not wish to attack you. I think that it is, it makes sense that you have your own understanding of your role as elected officials. But I think that 11.2 is, okay, sorry. Yes, legally, constitutionally, it was fully in line with your powers as a local city council. But I don't believe that it was in line with the spirit, the feeling of freedom of speech in this country. I understand, I understand why you passed it again. But I just, I really don't think it was a wise choice. And I think that I personally am disappointed in this, and I know that many others are as well. And I, but yes, I would like to say that I hope that all of us here have always stood against hate speech and have always agreed that hate speech was never allowed in this limited forum. And that's not what we were pushing for. So thank you all for your time, thank you for listening, have a lovely day.
And Mayor, the next individual is Lee Dean. And that's going to be followed by Ramona Gaylord, who is online.
The people that I really want to talk to are my fellow community members. I do feel in some ways, as you are members of community, I feel connected to you as humans. I do not feel any connection to you as city council members. I have already, this, since October 7th, I am a change person. And I don't know anybody who has seriously considered what's going on and not be a changed person. Muslim lives matter, Arab lives matter, Black lives matter, Indigenous lives matter. And that's who we are standing for. I'm really only here with a vision of unity with community. And that's what I've really gained. And I've gained friends, and I've gained people to fill all the emotions with. Anger and incredible frustration with something that I really, really believed as this moral ideal of our nation that I have lost trust in. All the things that we're doing, I don't think mean anything without this, without a foundation of what is our value. And really what is being spoken to me by what our city attorney said about, this is a business meeting, we run our city as a business, is that our government is a business, that we are capitalist, colonialist nation that, that is not standing for peace and understanding what we are as a community.
And Mayor, the last individual is Ramona Gaylord, who is online.
Yeah, I signed up too, waiting before the general public comment period.
Yeah. I also signed up and said submitted.
I followed your rules.
Thank you, Ramona. Ramona, can you hear us? Ramona, Ramona, are you, are you with us online? Have we promoted her?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Ramona, do you hear us? Okay. I'm sorry, I think, I believe that Ramona was actually wanting to speak about item number 17. I've spoken with her on the phone prior to this. She can, just to let Ramona know if she's listening, that you will be able to speak under public comment in 17.2 if you'd like to join us then. All right, and with that, we're going to move on to other new business.
Melissa, I signed up for the public comment period, I followed your directions, I followed the rules.
Take a recess.
All right. Take a recess. I make a motion to recess. Second. One second. Roll call please, ma'am.
Councilor Woodruff.
Yep.
Councilor Yazi.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Buehl.
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef.
Yes, thank you.
Free Palestine.
Free Palestine. Free Palestine. She goes and asks him to check the, the.
Yep, yep.
Hey, Ben.
Excuse me, sir.
You need to go back to your seat, okay? We're square. Thank you, Adam.
All right. We're going to, so we can back up on recess. We've included several times, we came, prior to opening of the comments sessions. My mic actually is on, but, okay. So we're, we're moving on to 15, if you have any other new business from councillors.
Here's a screenshot of some video I took of myself signing up for number 13 on the agenda. That's for public comment on non-agenda items.
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef.
Yes.
Thanks, sir. We'll definitely reach out.
Okay, reach out, thank you, ma'am.
He's in my office. We can do either or, he's in my office.
I'm going to send you guys a flyer.
Hey, I did sign up before that public comment started.
Thank you.
You want us to comment on why you didn't let me speak when I followed the rules?
After signing up through the item number selection key, everything.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yep, thank you.
I followed the rules. You guys.
They said it wasn't on there, there's a certain time period, you were here late, so my guess is it didn't get in on time.
The rule is that you have to sign up before the public comments start.
I talked to them.
And I did.
It's their rule.
Okay, I followed the rules.
Okay.
We're, we're a society of law and order, aren't we?
Yep, thank you, Adam, I appreciate it.
In a society of law and order, we should all follow the rules, right? Including city officials?
I'm not giving answers, just.
Well, you can leave.
I'm not leaving.
Okay.
This meeting's over in this public forum, so have a good evening.
Actually, it's not over, is it?
It's an executive session, so.
Right, okay.
So the public part of the meeting is over.
Right, but the public's still allowed in this city chamber. After executive session.
Public's out there right now.
Oh, well, the public is right here. Okay, so you've got an arbitrary assessment of what a reporter is.
He's licensed and credentialed.
Licensed, huh? So who licenses the press?
You want to sit out there, you can.
Who licenses the press in the state of Colorado? I can sit in here too.
You're not a real reporter.
I'm not a real reporter, huh? Okay. Okay, you get to just.
You want to sit in the lobby?
Sounds pretty arbitrary, who's out over there?
You can sit in the lobby, these are all staff members, they're working in City of Durango.
Mm-hmm.
You can sit in the lobby too.
I see public right here, I see public right there. Okay.
No, I'm not. I'm giving, but you can sit out there if you want to.
I know, I know we can sit in here too, right?
No, this is the done session.
Got public right here, we got public over there. This guy's definitely a member of the public, yeah. We've got various city officials in here. So what just happened is, I signed up for public comment according to the rules, according to the rules of during a city council, prior to the start of the public comment. And then when the public comment session arrived, they did not call my name. So that's where we're at right now. The police chief is saying the city hall is closed, even though there's public all over the place in here. Got the public in the back of the room. Ben, I signed up before public comment. You want to tell my, you want to tell me why? You didn't follow the rules that you, that were established? I follow the rules and I don't get to comment? Is that how it works? The city council meeting is almost over. All the public comments that happened, that were going to happen, right now, during, the city council is an executive session. But the city council just passed a resolution that would prohibit them from passing any legislation about matters of international public concern, or international political controversy.
controversy. Or any legislation about ideological religious topics, I believe it was. And then the resolution also would exclude any topics that were the resolution would allow topics that pertain to city of Durango business. So there's a bunch of public comments that just happened. Signed up for public comment before the public commenting started on a tablet out in the hall. And then when public comments began, throughout the entire public comment portion, they did not allow me to comment at all. They didn't announce my name as one of the public commenters. James Freeman, yeah. What happened is the city council here just passed a resolution that would prohibit them from passing any legislation of, about matters of international political controversy. So I signed up for the general public comment. I wasn't gonna talk about that particular agenda topic. And then when all the general public comments were happening, they never called my name, even though I signed up on the tablet out in the hallway. They required that you sign up for the general public comments in the lobby, which I did. And then they never called my name. And they said that I I don't know what their excuse was, but I tried to ask Ben Florin, the chief deputy clerk, why they wouldn't let me talk during public comments, even though I'd signed up. Ben Florin wouldn't talk to me. The chief put his hands on me. And then the chief tried to kick me out of the city hall chambers where I'm at right now, saying that the public wasn't allowed in here, even though these guys right here, those guys are public. And then the chief told me that I was not a member of the press and that the press has to be licensed. Durango Police Department Chief Bob Brammer said that the press in Colorado has to be licensed. That's what he said. And my stream died during a lot of that, but I got it all on camcorder working, Insta 360. So, yes. It was crazy. It was ridiculous. James, I'm so glad you joined. If you were here to see what happened at the end, you would have been outraged. I'm not here to take a stand on the conflict in Gaza, in that war. Good stuff, standing tall. Thanks for joining. So I just wanted to say that the city council should be allowed to pass legislation on matters of international political concern or political controversy. Specifically because we source... Yeah, totally, James. Wait till you see the video of that. Sorry, couldn't, sorry, my stream died. My battery wasn't connected properly with the cord. So my stream died during that, but general public's still in here. Okay, now, general public. Now, I don't even need to be the last person to the general public in here. So let's go ahead. So Bob, can you tell me why you think the press needs to be licensed in the state of Colorado? Like what political grounds you have for that?
It's not fake news like you are.
So where, what law is that that says that this?
Are you done with that?
What law says that? Can you tell me? Who licenses the press in Colorado? No, they don't? That's not a government entity. So the press think, so Bob Brammer thinks that the Colorado Press Association licenses journalists in Colorado? That's how ignorant he is. That's crazy. Did he just try to lock this door? Is that what I saw? Well, there's an executive session going on. So the, the people are still allowed in council chambers here. Yeah, he was really nasty, wasn't he? Huntington Township watch. Yeah, sorry. Yep, we do, James. Yeah, we got a, we got a Sony camcorder and an Insta 360 going. So I think I got chief touching me, putting his hands on me. Pretty stormy this week.
Oh my gosh!
Well, I can't do a FOIA during laughter hours. Well, besides that, FOIA isn't the records law here. It's CORA, Colorado Open Records Act.
Okay, I'm not traveling anymore. He's just at this time here.
No, I'm traveling.
He's like, my son's
What's up?
And so, yeah, so he went and watched him racing the mar. Then he was just at N C W, he was up his knee bolt, which was really awesome.
Exactly, James. But we're not enough? Alright. Oh, they locked, they locked the door.
Okay, you didn't feel that way then? Okay, I'll see you tomorrow night then.
So anyway, it was us, you know, it was us.
Yeah, no.
It was really fun.
That's important. Oh, yeah?
I can't remember.
Should be, should be a signal. If you think about it, just message me.
I think this meeting is technically over. There's still an executive session. And people should at least be allowed in council chambers.
Yeah.
They haven't officially ended the meeting, but here they are. They've got a locked door during the public meeting. So this chief is lawless.
Oh, the S A I.
Totally lawless.
Yeah, not the estimated amount. He did, right? Yeah, and what's happening now is pretty much schools, they've been pulled in, facts, records, you have the husband department of that.
The city council meeting has not ended. We're at the Durango City Hall in Durango, Colorado. Totally. Violation of the Colorado open meetings law, right here, guys? So we're at City Hall in Durango, Colorado, at the city council chambers. Well, this is the public lobby that you're looking at right here. And then behind those doors, these front doors right there, is the city council chambers, where you can see the Bob Brammer, police chief, in there. You can see me.
You locked yourself out, so...
Why, why is the door locked during a city council meeting? Well, time plays a matter, right? I mean, we're in a...
There's still an executive session, so they can come back in, too.
Why, that doesn't make sense. Why would you lock the door to a city hall during a city council meeting? Is that not a violation of the open meeting law?
It's scheduled to, had ended eight thirty. Okay, so that's why it was scheduled under time lock, because the person that schedules that is here. So that part's done, you're back in. They'll be back in, executive session.
Well, they haven't, they haven't officially ended the meeting yet.
I know, that's what I'm saying. That's why you're here.
Are you locking this door, too?
No, this door's not locked. And as soon as they come back in, which I think they're getting ready to re-adjourn, you can come back in.
So Bob Brammer is just has just let me back into the lobby here. So this is the municipal court clerk's window here. Got a TV for viewing the meeting when there's too many people to fit in the city council chambers. And we got a cashier's window here for people making payments and such. And then there was a tablet over here that I signed in on when I, when I got here, before public comments started. And amazingly, they did not let me make a public comment during the public comments portion of the meeting, even though I signed up following their rules.
I think he's got to turn on me to have a little check.
It looked like Gilde signed on as a yes to your promoter call us.
Alright, we're all back. I will reconvene the meeting. At eight forty-three P M. For the record, Durango City Council met in executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale, or transfer of an interest in real property located at one sixty-six East Thirty-third Street in a determined position for listed matters that may be subject to negotiations. No decisions were made. Individuals present in the executive session were Stokchine, Counselor Dave Woodruff, Mark Corbin, Mayor Proton Justin Buhl, Aaron Hyder, Eva Henson, Counselor Yasi, myself, Wallace Yusef, and Jose Mandrill. If anyone participated in the executive session believes that discussion went beyond progress of the executive session, please state your objections now. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is seventeen point two.
Do I have a motion from counsel? I made a motion to authorize staff to execute all necessary documents to acquire the real property located at one sixty-six East Thirty-third Street as discussed in executive session.
I will open it up for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this item live or virtually?
And Mayor, I think you indicated Ramona Gaylord wanted to talk.
Alright.
Seventeen point two, if she's still intending to search.
Can you guys hear me? Yes, we can. Hello, you are, you are live at our meeting. And we're opening our public comment. You have three minutes, please. I have it. Uh, thank you very much for this opportunity, honorable city council members. This is Ramona Gaylord. And my comment is about item number seventeen point one in the executive session, where you guys have already discussed the work first housing unit at one sixty-six East Thirty-third Street. And specifically requiring acquisition, sale, or transfer of interest. And I just wanted you to know that our daughter Soleil Gaylord, she's twenty-three, and she has accepted and begun a job in Durango. And started last month, and she's starting out her career, plans to be in Durango for the foreseeable future. She's ready to buy this unit as her first house. And we are asking that the city of Durango not purchase this condo and leave it to the workforce state restriction for Soleil to buy. We will, we have signed and completed the contract for purchase today with Heather Dawson at Gabe, depending upon what your guys' decision is. And we're ready to proceed with the purchase. And if the intention of the city was to provide housing for local professionals, this is exactly what we think your intention was. And so we are asking that the city not buy this property and allow Soleil the opportunity to buy it. And thank you so much for your consideration, kind consideration, and all you do for the town of Durango. And that's Ramona Kent and Soleil Gaylord speaking to all of us. Thank you. Thank you. I'll close this public comment and we'll have a house discussion.
It's a little bit unusual situation, but I can clarify that if it's not a contract with another buyer, direction you get, and if you just can't execute on it, and that's just where the hook goes. If that deal falls through for some reason, a successful motion would allow you guys to go forward with the purchase. But like I said, if there's already a contract issue represented in the financing and everything else, you would be able to use any authorization you got tonight to go forward and follow this backup hunger.
I'm not sure, I see Ramona, I hope that Ramona understands that. And that she could hear you clearly in the mic.
If she's first in line, she's first in line. Our motion, even though it were city, it doesn't give us any advantage in buying the property or just another buyer. And if she's first in line, she's first in line, even if seven.
Okay. Understood. So if there's a purchase contract already on the property, then that would have first. Uh, yeah.
I saw something I'm not seeing. I'm just saying, the motion you're passing tonight would not interfere with any private sale, as I understand it, tonight. And it should be interpreted that way, that contract is a contract, correct?
Okay, that's very helpful for Ramona to understand. Any other council discussion? Do you have a vocal, please?
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Buhl?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Right.
I'll be opposed, please, adjourned.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, same here.